Why don't we get started 6:13? Do you guys want me to read the minutes?
I'll read them. Lovely trustee meeting minutes, October 12th, 2021. Meeting called to order at 6:03 PM. President, Director Jim Crosby, Chair Janice Cook, Vice Chair Paula Loppe, Nina Abbott, Denise Conti, Helen Herter, Michelle Petrus, and Candace Rivera, Abbottson, Chair O'Pride, and Kate Mercier. Minutes of last month's trustee meeting were read, approved, and accepted. Directors report mobile hotspot are now live and available for checkout. Passes available to patrons now include Springfield Museum, Old Sturbridge Village, Boston Museum of Science. Jan is researching and will probably purchase Mango Language Learning Database subscription. This program includes about 26 languages and is very conversational. Includes many things one will find helpful when visiting other countries. Cost is about $900 per year. There is a children's version for an additional $1,000. But Jan, the children's librarian, does not feel it would be used enough to make it worthwhile. We can use last week's school year state aid grant, which is about $900 approximately. Patrons will need Granby Library Card to access. We are working on a flyer that can be handed out to include all the information about our newest additions to our resources. Hoopla, Mango Hotspots, Scholastic Teachables, passes, etc. Trustee account update. New York Securities LLC account is down to $30,633.65, which is down $561 from last month. It is still over our starting balance of $30,000. The savings account is currently at $3,770.59, and the CD has a balance of $33,041.79. Other. The book sale is now over. Remaining books are free to whoever would like them, and then the remainder will be donated to local charities. Helen Herter gave an update on the Alice Stewart Memorial Garden Project. One end of the large rock is broken from moving, not stable. We will need Dave DeRochers from the Highway Department and his heavy equipment to move and stabilize. He is presently on vacation. Gina Hartley will be in touch with him when he returns. The left side of the garden has been turned over and is awaiting compost. A new trustee orientation is online for those who have not participated in this. Please let Jan know when you have done so. Warrants, $2,865.10, Baker, Taylor, Brixton Publishing, Engle Entertainment, and $2,647.10 of Taco, Baker, Taylor, and Engle Entertainment. A motion made by Candace to accept warrants and to have Paula sign, seconded by Denise. Next trustee meeting November 9th, 2021, adjourned at 6:28.
Beautiful job.
Thank you.
I don't think I see anything. Except for Jan, the children's librarian. I don't know if that's Janice?
Janice.
Oh, yeah. I never called her Jan.
Me neither.
And at first I was like, who's Jan?
I call Jan all the time.
Do you? I didn't see anything.
You can only work here if she's got a J name.
Well, that's right. I'm coach here, so I'm in charge of the meetings.
That's right. I don't know. Does anybody see anything that needs to be corrected? Amended or anything? So does anybody want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, we can't do it until...
Yeah?
No.
Because it's a vote, right?
It is a vote.
It's a vote.
Oh, okay.
It's hard to wait.
Till Nina gets here.
Minutes read.
Right.
Pause. Good catch.
This is gonna mess me up. I have it all down in my head now.
Well, we can revisit the minutes and just have her look those over when she gets here. So I will do my update. For our building update, all of our carpets have been cleaned, except for the community room. That will be done next week. But she's done a great job. It looks really good in here. It smells clean. So that was great. It's been done over the past couple of weeks. Some of our programming has moved indoors. We are hosting small groups for our preschool play group, our Read to Dogs program. We have a Dungeons and Dragons group that needs, it's a little teen group, our book group, and our knitting. So those are the things we moved indoors, and we are, you know, just keeping with the six-foot distancing and not going over too many attendees for everything. And just seeing how it goes. So far, everyone's been really good about mask wearing and following the rules because they just want to be here.
They must be really happy to be indoors doing the programs.
Yes. Yeah, definitely. It is a little chilly. The preschool play group is doing an outdoor component after the regular group, so any families who are not comfortable coming indoors with their little ones can meet outside, whether depending, you know, just bundling the kids up and letting them play outside with, you know, various activities. Because there are a few families in town who choose not to come inside yet. So we're doing that for as long as the weather will hold out. It's been working out really well. Again, I think it's just nice people are just happy to be together in space. We are doing a trial run of an art exhibit in our community room. Barbara Sullivan's artwork is there again.
Who is Barbara Sullivan?
Barbara Sullivan. She's the one who does the Alcohol Inc. art workshops. She has her, I believe it's pastel that she does as well in there, watercolors. It's beautiful. So you're welcome to take a look.
And is that through when? How long?
Through the end of November.
Okay.
And so she is also hosting an Alcohol Inc. art workshop on November 18th at 6 o'clock. We are already full for that. We, you know, unfortunately can only have 12 people due to space. It's hard because you need space for people to really stretch out and, you know, do their art. But then you also need them to share certain paints. And it's a hot mess, but we're trying 12. We'll see how it goes. So that is full, but if anyone's interested, we do have a waitlist. And then the other thing we're doing is our Pastel Workshop with Greg Maycheck, which is this Saturday, and that one's being held via Zoom. We did that one during the pandemic via Zoom, and it worked out really great. Like, I think having him, you know, putting his artwork right on the screen that you can see rather than in a room where you're far away. You have a little less of the one-on-one help. You know, you can show him what you're doing, and he can give you tips, but it's a little bit more self-run. But I was able to do it last time. It was really fun. Like, I had a great time, and you really don't have to have all that much artistic ability, as I showed.
Like a step-by-step thing?
Yeah, so he'll kind of show you, like, okay, first you make, you know, this shape, and then you fill it in with this color, and then he shows you how to blend it, and he kind of really takes you line by line. It's really cool. I've never done anything like that before.
Does it work with chalk or...?
Yeah, it's like the chalk pastels. So everybody gets a bag to take home with the paper in it, and then all the different little pieces of the chalk, the different colors he uses, and you get a little smudge, a little thingy. I don't know the proper word for it. Little smudger. And it's really cool. Like, I had a lot of fun doing it. So there is still room in that. If anyone's interested, you can do it in your pajamas from home. Okay, so that's my update on the building and what's going on. And you saw from my email, I sent everybody a copy of our updated action plan, and I put a little bit of an explanation for our newer trustees, who are not here tonight. But our action plan for fiscal year 2023 has been updated. This is a support plan to our five-year-long-range plan that we do every five years. It must be submitted each year so we can stay in compliance with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners that has us qualify for certain state grants and other funding programs, the construction program being an example. Like, when we were doing the construction program, we had to make sure we had this in every single year by a certain date so that we still qualified to receive that. They need to see that we're, you know, kind of holding up to our end of the bargain, so to speak, that these are what things we're doing. We're keeping current. We're moving forward. And so I basically just updated, you know, year by year, we do these little objectives and the actions in which we're going to take for these objectives. The changes that I made so far. Goal one, I put that we would, the action there, to update our collection, to acquire new relevant titles, to replace those deleted from reading. I'm not sure how many of you have been browsing through our collection, but I did a huge reading project this past, like, couple of months where I really just revamped our entire nonfiction. I was going through it, and I'm like, these books are so outdated, and they don't really have up-to-date information. They have old, you know, just information that's just not current and correct. So I went through, and I got rid of a ton. So now my newest job has been acquiring new titles to replace what I got rid of. So, you know, if you're in the politics section, I completely bought all new politics books. And parenting, obviously, has changed over time, and finances and all that. So it's been quite the project. But kind of updating this to show that we have done what we said we were gonna do last year. Now this is what I'm doing, you know, to kind of move on from that. I also put in there that we are adding Nintendo Switch games, that they're popular with the youth. We have a video game collection, but we never had any of those before because the game cartridges are really tiny. I mean, they're like, they're like an inch big. They're so tiny. But we finally found a way to put them in cases so that people can't steal them off the shelf, and finally decided to put them in, and we've been circulating like crazy. The kids come in, and they beeline right for that section, and we get games that parents are happy to let their kids take. So it's been working out really well so far. So that was important to add that. And then goal number two, stay the same. Goal number three, I added that we have a bulletin board that we are going to maintain now that is specifically for homeschool groups that we have in town. We have a group that actually meets here quite regularly, and so we thought having a bulletin board up there just for them to kind of share their homeschooling information with other homeschoolers in town would be a really great resource to have since we have so many families that have switched to homeschooling since the pandemic started. So we have that going. And then, let's see, goal four, basically stay the same. I did update goal four under actions, where we've said acquire and maintain new online resources. I put to maintain and monitor the use of new subscriptions attained, including Hoopla, Scholastic Teachables, and Mango Language. Now that we have those, my job will be to monitor the usage of it to make sure it's worth having and spending, you know, those funds on every year. If it's something that we see people aren't using, then we can, you know, find something else, maybe do a survey, and see what they really do want. But I've already found people really like Hoopla. I don't know if you guys have gotten into it yet, but I've had a lot of people using it. We've already spent quite a bit of the funding that we put into it. So it's not just the staff. I wish, like, the funny thing is we'll be the ones using it the most.
What is Hoopla?
It's kind of like a Libby. Do you use the Libby app on your phone? So it's kind of another digital catalog where you have access to TV shows, movies, audiobooks, ebooks, and you get, it's like a subscription service that we pay for, and each person with a Granby Library Card gets 10 free checkouts per month. And so, and stuff is available all the time. So with the other digital catalog, you have to kind of wait for things to come available, like you would with a regular library book. With this, it's available all the time. So you can have audiobooks to stream, you know, through your phone. You can have, you know, TV shows, and it actually hooks into your Roku device or your tablet, your phone, pretty much any device that you have, or you can get an app on it. You can get the Hoopla app.
And you can get like a hotspot if you don't have the Wi-Fi and do it through that.
We have hotspots now too for alone, which are people who go on vacation quite a bit or like to go camping. They are good to have if you don't have access to the internet. They have like little tiny, little hubs for your internet, which my parents actually used one when they went camping, and it worked out amazing. Yeah, and they were in the middle of the woods, and it runs through T-Mobile's mobile network. So it worked for them where they normally have, like, nothing out there. So it's pretty cool. It's fun to try it out, see how it works. Yeah. But anyway, so that was goal number five. I went off on a tangent. And then goal number six, I just added that we, we had in there to research the cost of having a circulating computer in the children's room, which we already did. So I changed it that we will now be researching the cost to upgrade our computers in the great hall and acquiring hotspots, which we already have, and other technology for our patrons to use either in-house or at home. So we'll be looking in the future at, it's probably gonna be the very far future, but looking at replacing the computers that those, the people use, at least updating the windows on them, and then possibly getting some tablets that people can use here in the library to set up if they need to have a meeting or whatever. I have a lot of people that come in and ask if they could do, like, a Zoom call from our history room, and, you know, they say, oh, I don't have a device. And, you know, it would be nice to have something that we could then say, here, you can use, you know, a library tablet, set it up and have your meeting.
That is wonderful.
Yeah. We have a lot of people that do, like, I have an interview for a job. Well, if you're looking for a job and you don't have a computer or you don't have internet at home because you need a job to pay for those things, you know, it gives people some access that they might not normally have. You know, sometimes I think we get spoiled, and we don't realize that some people just don't have these things, you know? And, you know, it would really be helpful to come somewhere. You've got to start somewhere. So that will be another goal I work on. And I'm doing a lot of networking with other directors. So I'm hoping that, you know, by talking with them and seeing what they do and, you know, what works for their patrons, it kind of gives me a little insight into, you know, what we can do here that we might not have normally thought about. So does anyone have any questions about that? I did, the date at the bottom is wrong. I did the date correct on the top, the 2023, but then I realized my footer has the wrong date on it. So the wrong year. So I will be, whenever we do one of these, it's for the following fiscal year. So I submit it in December for fiscal year 2023, which is scary to think about.
When does fiscal year start?
Fiscal year starts July 1st. So we're in fiscal year 22 right now, and then fiscal year 23 will start in July, which is scary to look at those dates and imagine that 2023 is actually gonna happen.
So where would you go to sign up for the Hoopla?
So we have, our website has the link on it. We also have bookmarks that you can take home that has the information on it. You basically go to your Play Store or your App Store on your device, whatever device you have, and then just search up Hoopla, and then just like get the app.
Oh, you can do the app?
Yes. And then the app will then ask you for, you know, which library are you from, and then it will ask you for your card number. And that's all you need. You just have to have a...
And probably an email?
Granby, yeah, you might. Yes, I think you have to make an account with them, specifically with them. But once you get it all set up, it remembers all your info, so you don't have to put it in every time.
And the Granby Library picture, Granby Library comes up? And you just go in.
Yeah, it'll tell you.
I watched Doc Martin season eight and nine. I watched nine, I better watch eight next.
Another thing we're finding is that a lot of people went digital, you know, with the pandemic. Everybody went, got all these streaming services, but sometimes there are certain things you can't find. So you're like, okay, well, this one season, I have to pay $3.99 an episode on Amazon to watch it, and nobody wants to do that.
And I saw it on then, I went, oh my goodness.
You know, it's amazing how that can happen. So, yeah, it's been working really well. People are getting really excited about it. Just the hardest part is getting the word out and, like, getting people comfortable with using the technology. So I have been having a lot of one-on-one sessions with people who come in and I'm like, I tell them, just bring in your device, bring in your tablet, bring in your laptop, bring in your phone, and I'll walk you through it because that's like the easiest way to get in there. And then if I need to reset their password, I'm right here to do that for them. And so getting everyone on board is the hardest part. But once they get on, I have people that come to me, and they're like, oh my God, thank you. Like, now I'm obsessed with this, you know, book or show or whatever. So it's cool to see.
And get music too. We only have it for a week, seven days or something? Yeah, and then it vanishes. It just goes away.
So when your seven-year-old wants little Halloween music by Kids Bop, you only have to listen to it for seven days, and then, thank goodness, goes away. That was really fun, but I was like, okay, I'm really sick of this. After the third day, if I have to hear the Skeleton Song one more time. There she is. You made it just in time. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, that's what I said. I was like, thank you so much.
We need you. It's nice to be needed.
They miss a lot.
So we ended up, what, reading the, going over the minutes, but we didn't vote on them because we were waiting for you. And she was just going over the director's minutes, I mean, the director's report about the update of the building and the update of, what was the other thing?
Our action plan.
Oh, and the action plan. So, yeah, she has, she can give you a copy of the, for the action plan.
Yeah. For... There's that, and then our minutes. If you need someone to go over, you're welcome. We didn't have any corrections to the minutes, but if you see anything, feel free to tell us. You're our hero.
Oh, the Mango Language, I remember talking about that last night.
Yes. Only other thing I have is our, the trustee friends account update. I'm not sure how you guys want me to continue to present that. If you're okay with me just saying, like, this account is now at this. It either went up or it went down by this much. If you, like, every month want me to send out this whole spreadsheet that I get, I can't really find a way to print it very easily.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have a spreadsheet.
Okay.
I mean, just having an update saying, like, what it's doing, if it's up or down.
Okay, just like a quick little recap.
Like, we took a while up in this month or something.
Yeah, like last month, oh my gosh. This month, it did back, go back up a little bit. It went up to $30,931, which is an increase of $297. So it went up by like about, what, half of what we lost. So there were no changes in the Alice Stewart account, and our other accounts make, you know, 15 cents or a hundred dollars. So unless there's anything earth-shattering happening with those, I won't bring those to the table to bore everyone every single month. Those accounts are kind of just trickling along and doing their thing.
I think it was a good decision to go with the one that Chris Fooer ended up recommending that we go with.
Yeah, it has done well overall. So can't complain. What do you think? What do you think about our minutes?
I don't see anything. It looks good to me.
Yeah, it looks good.
Revisit and vote?
Yeah. Anybody wanna make a motion to accept the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. I'm prepared and ready, Michelle.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So then, I don't know. So I don't think we have too much more going on. I think we have the warrants.
Yeah, we have the warrants. And then we just have to do a quick vote on the action plan. As long as you guys are all okay with the changes I made. Basically, it's just an update, but I send it out to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. So I figured getting a formal vote would...
So you do do it every year, and there are some things that just don't need to be updated, but they're like, I did see the couple of things that you did have to...
Yeah, there were some things that are just kind of like ongoing maintenance, things that we just continue to do. And like, there's gonna be a whole lot of change to those things, but then there are other things that I do like to update. You know, once we have done one of them, I like to tell the group, you know, like, I took this off and I added this because we did that one thing, you know, like adding the children's room circulating functions to her computer, and the time we added computers in the teen room, that was a big thing. So it just kind of shows the progress that we're making year by year. So I do keep a copy of every single year so that, you know, once we go through our five-year plan, we can look back and say, oh, these are the things we did get to do. It kind of gives a bit of a, like, compass for us as librarians as to, you know, what do we want to work on this year? And, you know, what are the things that we should be focusing on when we have, like, a few minutes to breathe and work on a project or something, which doesn't always happen often? But, yeah, so I will, if it's accepted, I will update it and send everybody a master copy, and then I'll send it to the Board of Library Commissioners.
I like the way it, I like the way it came out. I like the ideas. I love the idea about them. I think the tablet's available for people now. And the homeschooling, that actually was like a nice addition to it, you know? Because I didn't realize how many people are decided, that decided to homeschool, so.
Yeah, it's definitely, you know, there's a lot of ebb and flow going on right now with these things that are changing, and, you know, what's becoming more important to people is changing. So it's interesting to watch the trends and, you know, especially with everything happening in the world, and what people need now has changed. So we are trying to support everyone as much as we can.
When is this your library? I've never heard of that.
It's kind of like a, if you ever go on our website and you notice the ticker at the bottom that shows the new books that we have out, it's kind of like a service that promotes our books for us. So they send out a weekly email every time Jean puts, like, a whole bunch of new stuff in the catalog. It'll come up in someone's email, or you'll see it on the Facebook. So the people get, like, a, with the time, update of what we're putting in our system. It works out really well. People, like, I find the second she puts books in the system and that email goes out, they, like, immediately start, you know, asking for them. We get the poll list with all the different titles, and she's like, I just did, I'm not even done processing it yet. Everybody wants them, so it's good. It's a good way to promote our collection, get people to know what we've got to offer. Does anyone else have any other questions about it?
Yeah, I think it was pretty well explained and...
Thank you.
Nice job, Jan. Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion to approve the action plan for fiscal year 2023?
I'll make a motion to accept the, the action plan as advised for year 2023.
I'll second it.
Everyone seconds it.
Who was first?
So all in favor? Aye. I think all in, all in favor for the second.
Well, I did, but it needed to at the same time. So you can put her name down, I seconded it.
Cause I'm fighting over who doesn't wanna have their name on it.
Okay, and I have two warrants, which I will hand to Paula for signing. They are on one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents, which is Baker and Taylor and the Library Store. And the other one is five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents, and that one had a ton of stuff on it. Fire Detection Systems, Baker and Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, Ingram Entertainment and the Library Store. That was a big one.
And so we have to make a motion to have me sign the minutes or do we have to do it with Janice not being here?
Um, I think we can make a motion just for you to sign them as vice chair. Yeah, I think that's what we did last, did we do that last?
We did do that last time.
Yeah.
Well, I, cause I know she was doing it through Zoom, but I mean, with her not being here with me being
Oh, true.
the the chair and automatically having to do that, that's why I was like, I was wondering.
Yeah, I think you just kind of take over. Okay, okay. We wanna vote, sir. I guess I can't make a motion.
What, do we have to make a motion to accept them?
Make a motion to accept them and have them.
Make a motion to accept this warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I forget that I can't make them. Just inserting myself into your business. There we go. Thank you. And yeah, this one was, um, you notice there was like a whole ton of Blackstone Publishing. I had a little bit of a tiff with the company where they, we were, first it was owned by Recorded Books and they.
Yeah, they've been like crazy Blackstone.
Yeah, so Blackstone bought out their audiobook distribution, I guess. And so what we did before is we were part of like um a plan where they would send us three distributed titles every single month. So the top three of their like editor's choice. And so I was like, okay, that's cool, but I also wanna go in and order the ones that we want too. Like every now and then, whenever we feel like we wanna order them. So the guy's like, all right, that's fine and you can pick the ones you want because we we ended up with a thousand James Pattersons. We weren't getting any other audiobooks except for James Patterson, Clive Cussler and like one other person. So if you notice like our audio shelf, they're they're very like, they're they're very skewed. It's like very this much of Patterson. So I told them we no longer want Patterson. So the guy's like, okay, well, you can go ahead and just pick your own and put in the memo that this counts as your distributed list. So I'm like, oh, great, okay, cool. So I was doing that, then they were sending us duplicates of everything. And I was just like, wait a minute, like they were sending us the top three anyway and then he started sending me Patterson even though he said he wasn't going to. So then I ended up with all of these individual bills. And I just said, like, can we just like cut those out? Like I'll send them back and you can just wash? And he's like, no, you have to pay them and we'll give you a credit. So you want me to pay like twelve bills for the, like twelve of the same audiobooks? It was, it's a little ridiculous, but I canceled our plan. I was like, you know what?
You know why? Cause a lot of times if you return it, they have, they they get nothing from it. They have to destroy the copy. It's really weird.
Really? That's so sad.
Why?
My gosh.
It's just the way it works. I don't know why. I don't know why I do it that way.
Sad, I know.
Such a waste.
So yeah, but they told you.
It is like, they should like, um, I I think uh they have more of a.
Like the author telling what they wanted. I bet you that's what.
Yeah, cause it's like they have to, like, we still have to pay them for it, like they have to get the, like, be reimbursed for it and then I can get credit. So finally I just said, you know what, we'll keep these ones, we'll have duplicates of a couple. I'm I'm done with sending stuff back, it's too much work and I wanna deal with it, so I paid for them all, we're getting a credit. And I canceled the distributed plan and I told them, I will just buy the ones I want from the list on my own time, like every month. Because our audio circulation has actually kind of gone down on, and I think it's because people prefer to do the streaming rather than have the CDs. A lot of people don't have a CD player in their car anymore, so um.
I know, I can't believe it.
It's so weird.
That's weird.
No, it's like, you know, some people are like, I don't even know if I have a CD player anymore, like where do you get them? And it's like, you can't even.
Where are they on the dance floor?
It's like such a strange world we're living in where, you know, it's just so much easier to stream it now. And I'm I'm one of those people that like, I used to listen to the CDs all the time with my little CD player in my office and now I just stream it all through my phone, so you don't really need that anymore. So I'm kind of taking a step back after that debacle. Four thousand Blackstone Publishing. Chris Martin is probably ready to kill me, I apologize for that, but you know. I haven't taken care of it, it's under control now. The library director is not going rogue. It might have looked that way though, it was just like such a hot mess. Like you guys are killing me. I've never spent so much time dealing with audiobooks in my life, like I have other things to do in my day, but. So yeah, hopefully I've, you know, put the gavage on on that issue for now, so. Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, do we have anything else, other?
Is it possible to change the day of the meeting?
I was, and I was talking to you about it, Paula.
Uh, yeah, and I mentioned something to them and I, and you know, we had said that, you know, the library was open.
Well, Friday night.
On late, on Thursdays and Mondays it wasn't open.
It's a start of a weekend.
Um, okay.
You know, people go away or.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stay home from a weekend away.
That's true.
You wanna go Sunday, you wanna go Sunday night? As much fun as we have.
And Monday night doesn't work either? Because it's closed. Could we open up? Just we can't open up for the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's technically my day off.
Oh, oh, right, right, that's it.
Nobody wants to see that on this camera, like me in my pajamas. I don't do my hair on Mondays, I don't do my makeup, it would be scary.
Yeah, I might be able to join through Zoom, but I have to work Tuesday.
Well, that's okay, cause we can plan for that.
Oh.
Where do you work?
The Global Hand Library.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, we can plan for that in the future. I just didn't know with Janice not coming, I didn't even think anybody else would want to do Zoom because everybody else has been in person. But I can, when I do the posting, I can definitely do like virtual, so.
Okay, I'll try that.
Okay, we can do that for the future, we'll just plan on it.
I'll just do it, make sure that I do it for every time, so. Okay. We can do that.
Alrighty.
Easy problem solved.
There we go.
So are we gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten or seven.
Six fifty.
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.